I know to show up sooner or later. But if I don't do that, then they get upset with me because they don't have a video to put up on the town website. Today is September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. We're in the municipal meeting room of the Avondale Town Hall. And I get a roll call from that end.
Lee J. Feldman, town planner.
Marty Kane.
James Lowry.
Paul Green.
Tom McGinn.
Susan Roth.
I'm Rich Canong, the chair. We have this tonight approval of the agenda. Approval of minutes of September fifth, two thousand, two thousand and twenty-three. We have a space for public comments. We have pending business. One item, Glencoe Heights subdivision. And under other business, we have the planners business. We have some land use ordinance amendments that we're going to be taking a look at for review. Any questions?
Take a motion. We approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Paul, seconded by both Marty and Tom. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Approval of minutes of September fifth. I'm assuming this means the sidewalk. Oh, no, we have the minutes as well. So we have both of them.
Yeah.
So we have the sidewalk for Eschbach Storage Facility. And all three of us were there.
I'll make a motion and we approve the sidewalk minutes of September fifth.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Paul Green, seconded by Jamie Lowry. Those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay.
I came late, remember?
We have three in favor and three abstentions.
Who, who, who voted in favor?
All three of us. Paul, Paul, Jamie and I.
Okay.
And then we have the board minutes themselves from September fifth.
I move we accept them as written.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Susan Roth, seconded by Marty Kane to accept the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Abstain.
It is, I, okay, we have five in favor and Tom is abstaining. Onto the next item. This is public comment. This is that spot in the meeting where if you have something that is not on the agenda and you would like the planning board to look at it some going forward, this is the time that you would step up and say, yes, I have this issue or I have that issue. And if you do, please take the mic. Press the button so the green light comes on and state your name. I'm going to assume.
It's only for items not on the agenda. The items on.
So I'm going to assume that nobody has any comments and we will close the public comment and we will move right into pending business. Glencoe Heights Subdivision Preliminary Plan. The applicant is proposing a thirteen lot subdivision on Jasper Lane, tax map one lot eighteen. The parcel is fifty-one point four nine acres in the R three and R four zones. The plan includes thirteen single family homes. The project will have nine hundred plus or minus reconstructed roadway and an additional two thousand feet of new road. Colleen Campbell is the property owner. Dempsey LLC is the applicant represented by Thomas Gillis. Take it away, boss.
Just one trade. Two thousand feet of new road.
Oh, because we had nine hundred feet of reconstructed roadway and an additional two thousand feet.
Yeah, I think. I heard about the agenda which miscarried the two thousand. Remember the original one?
Right.
But this is nine hundred and fourteen feet from here.
Oh. Okay.
You know, that gave twenty.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Sure.
Uh, so basically we put together. Put together a plan that we really like and it serves the purpose. We've done two test pits per lot. Uh, you can see on there. We only need one for the better to get the addition on. We've got a lot in there pretty well. A lot of adequate size compared to the aspects that we're done. And uh, we like it. So I hope you do too. If you have any questions. Uh, you, most of you, well, a few of you were at the sidewalk and you saw what a beautiful parcel it is and nice, uh, nice beaches there. Uh, we do need a terminal for the traffic and the stream. But it's a minor impact, but it's supermit by rule. We're going three hundred and eleven feet of coverage during one month. Uh, exist outside the twenty-five feet exemption if you get on either side of streaming channel within section ten. Those permanent requests were submitted to E P L eleven of September of this year, but they haven't gotten back to us to officially accept them yet. And I'm.
Shocked, I tell you, I'm shocked.
Yeah, but I don't need to screen any questions. We've got a thirty-six inch hover in there. Big enough to accommodate in there a stream channel. And um, you know, these aren't particularly high volume weapons or anything that is typical of quite a different one.
And for the rector, your name?
My name is William Carter, my principal at Longmont Park.
You mentioned the culvert bill. Are y'all embedding that?
Yes.
Thank you.
In the road profile that I put there, I sized it as two eighteen inches. It should have been a thirty-six. You can ask Bill first. I just thought eighteen would be fine. And uh, he suggested that the state would go with that. So there's an error on the profile. But that'll be corrected when the engineers do the final road. I'm guessing you expect the cross-sections every fifty feet down.
Yeah, for the final plan set, we're going to want to go over that because there's going to be a lot more information that's going to be required in order to have a full plan set.
Yeah, Eric Dubey will be the engineer. He asked me what type of drainage portals are you going to be doing?
Uh, well, with the roadway, um, we're going to need a typical T R fifty-five stormwater analysis.
So that's, that's what he asked.
Yep.
But that'll be by the final. That's it.
How wet was it this week?
What's that?
How wet was it this week with all the rain?
I didn't go down because I fell down and almost broke my toe. So I couldn't limit it in my walking.
I'm just asking.
I did it on the cycle. Probably the last night. Nice to talk and enjoy our.
Can, could, could you come up so that the mic picks you up better, please? For our recording.
We, um, you know, we've worked on this site now for about nine months and it just isn't a heck of a lot of evidence of standing water hydrology. You know, the soils that are out there allow the water to move right through, you know, without holding it up overly long. It's a very non-scientific way of saying that.
Test pit showed seasonal highs on some of the down.
We, you know, most of the seasonal high groundwater tables were existing in between fifteen and twenty-four inches. But we had some that were in excess of thirty-six inches. The test pits that we did identify that passed were really more trying to adhere to his concept than uh, be representative of the, you know, amount of suitable soils that actually do exist on the site. I think if we were forced to dig a hundred test pits, we would still be able to find suitability where we needed to dig them outside of setbacks. I think we only identified one soil test bit in our first go around that didn't meet the state minimum standards for first time systems release water.
That's because they charge by the test.
That's right. Got to dig a couple that don't pass.
I got to go. Now, but again, we've been working hard on us getting it together. I think we put together, we need to come back.
Seventeen.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Has anybody in the public have any comments?
Not yet, because we haven't had a public hearing.
No, I mean.
Right, the board can determine if they want to hold a public hearing, if they want to hold it tonight. If you want to hold it at a later date or if you want to hold it at final review. Um, so that's in the ordinances, the board's call is to do that.
If, if I may, since there seems to be a number of people, I assume we're, we're all interested in this application. It might be good to get here from them, get some input early on rather than later.
I wanted to give the applicant the opportunity to finish up. He's looking for some waivers on a couple of things and we might want to discuss those before, before we get comments from the public. So at least they have an idea as to where we're going.
Right. So if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to um, piggyback on that, you'll want to go through those waivers and determine if you want to grant them all. Then um, at that point, you'd be able to find the application complete and set the dates to move the application forward or not. Um, I do have um, a list of recommendations as part of this, part of the approval, and I'd actually have some more to add to that since the report was written. Um, but when you're ready, I'll be happy to go over that with you.
Okay, let's, let's look at the waivers.
So can I ask a question on the waivers first?
Sure.
Bill, do you know was anything submitted like uh, to justify the waivers?
I, I don't know. That is um.
Please, yeah.
In fact, I wasn't sure if you needed written waivers for this meeting. I just put them in there based on judgment.
Right, there was, there was no justification written as to the requests.
High intensity soil. And we did test it, moved down the soil. Quite fine. I just wasn't sure where we would have to put it by intensity. The location of trees. You know, forest clearing. It is pretty much. Do where the houses are and septic are. So I thought that was something that we would address later. Drift generation assessment. I mean, twenty-four acres, it falls under a always the term of the road.
Secondary.
Secondary road in this knowing that. Uh, value of wildlife. I wasn't sure why we would need it up. Uh, as we're giving a conservation area, any any wildlife will migrate there, I guess. And so, and the phosphorus control plan. It's not in the water shed, so I thought that was just uh kind of a routine asking. So I, I think that before we're asking for it, pretty reasonable.
Anybody from the board with questions?
I have a question for Lee J. Um, Lee J, so have you reviewed these waiver requests?
Yes, of course.
Okay, and so um, in terms of the high intensity soil tests, wouldn't that be something that would be in addition to doing the test pits and or would the test pit pass supersede the?
Yeah, be, be, because they've done two test pits on every parcel, um, that pretty much equals or supersedes a high intensity soil survey. There's a lot of information there um, for them to do additional test pits just to map it and tell us whether or not you know, there's clays or sandy soils or whatnot. Um, the soils that are there are going to be pretty consistent because of all the test pits that have been done, consistent with whatever information they provide us, which of course, as you know, those test put, those test pits will go towards the um, septic system designs for all of the property. Um, and so they have to pass the H H E two hundred um, test, if you will, uh, in order to get a septic system um, on the property as well.
Okay.
And you, you've seen the results of the test pits?
I, I have not. They were submitted um, to you. I have not had a chance to review those specifically. No.
I also put in soils map that shows it's basically the same.
We, we were finding predominantly Namburg and Krogan soils, which are uh, stratified drift sands with a water table usually existing between fifteen and thirty inches.
And I included the towns. Soil map, which pretty much there are going to, it's on the image. It's this one here.
Yeah, and I mean, with the test pits and the, what does look like they're fairly consistent soils, I mean, I really don't think it would be providing the board a whole, or at least me in particular, a whole lot more information just to have it laid out on the map.
Yeah, we're happy with the quote that out there.
We, and we did uh, dig enough test pits within the proposed subdivision area while we were there digging for septic. In case you guys ask for it, uh, you know, I, we try to always map to class A standards, which indicates that you need to have at least one test pit uh, within your logs for every map unit that you display on the map. And so we wanted to make sure that we got a couple wet holes and at least one somewhat poorly drained hole in case we did get asked to map it. It's not a, you know, it's not a hard exercise, but again, the clients get to pay.
Yeah. And he probably does that for a bit too.
And we don't need any more piss for that. Give my computer time though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the um, test pits, which I'm looking at fairly quickly, a lot of them are sandy soils. Um, there's no ledge. Um, there's no clay. Um, there's nothing of limiting factors for septic system designs. In fact, it's pretty good soil for septic systems.
It's absolutely surprised.
So to the chair, I have another question for Lee J.
Okay.
So would we want you to do a more in-depth uh, you know, uh, look at the test pit results, or do you think just by looking at it in a cursory fashion is sufficient um, to grant or deny a waiver?
Yeah, so from a waiver standpoint, I mean, it's one thing um, to grant or deny a waiver with you folks. Um, but again, unless they um, can't meet the septic system design requirements, then they're not going to get a um, septic system issued by the code officer. And so I think, you know, a cursory review of this at this level certainly is fine. Um, and waivers, um, a waiver of doing any additional test pits, considering what we're, what I'm seeing real quick on there, um, I don't think you need them.
Okay, that, that's, that answers my question.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So I move we vote to grant the waiver of the high intensity soil survey.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jamie Lowry, seconded by Susan Roth to grant a waiver for the high intensity soil survey. Any questions? Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. And so I have to tell you, I looked at the, the next one on the list, the, the location of trees extent of forest clearing for lawns and structures. And I thought to myself, what a bizarre constant request.
Which one?
I, I thought it was a bizarre request, not, not for you to guy, guys to ask to waive it, but for it to be on the application to make you ask us to waive it.
To make you locate.
You're not, you're not.
Diameter.
Well, that's what I, that's what I thought it was.
If you, if you don't clear it out, then none of the people who buy a house are going to have a lawn.
Right. I was a little confused by it myself, but I, when I read it, I'm like, oh, they don't want every single tree like inventoried in law.
No, no, it would, it would have been, you know, on pick a lot, lot seventeen.
Yeah.
And we're going to clear out this space in front of it. Well, yeah.
Are you comfortable when we get to find?
Or am I missing it completely?
No, no, not at all. In fact, I was going to say two things. One is that, excuse me, on the final plan, they ought to show an envelope of where the sites um, are going to be proposed to be cut for the house location, yards, whatever they're gonna, you know, provide to whoever's going to build there. Um, the other thing is maybe we want to take a look at the application form at some point and see if that's something that we really need to have on the application form.
Yep, good point.
Yeah. I was again, I would that.
Should they do a full inventory of every tree on the property?
Yeah.
You have to help though, you have to.
But you're worth every penny.
That was, that was my whole comment about that particular. It's like, really?
Yep.
Okay, I just assumed you wanted me to get a forester in there to inventory everything and I, that's why I said I.
Oh, that would be an interesting scenario.
If, if I may.
Yeah.
There's, the other part of that requirement is that um, to, to provide the, the building envelope where, where the house would be provided without clearing trees. And the way I look at it is um, I think you'd probably want to keep it as wooded as possible. You'd be probably not looking to clear cut everything. Plus, once you sell the property, what's to stop them from slowly cutting trees down as needed? Um, so far as I'm concerned, it's uh, it's asking for information that that I'm not sure what the point is.
Okay, okay, that's where I was going.
Well, I think the key to remember, guys, this whole thing. I'm new to this, but I think what you're really worried about is having a buffer between each of the lots, right?
Right, so when you come to your final plan, um, you're going to need some kind of a landscape plan in terms of how much of, of a buffer you're going to leave between the houses.
Right.
Uh, what, you know, what's going to happen with setbacks and things like that? Because we're going to want to understand what all of that is about, because we've had issues where people have assumed one thing about what's going to be left in terms of existing, you know, foliage and trees, and it's turned out to be something completely different.
Right.
So we are going to want some kind of a roadmap from you in terms of what the lots are going to look like once they're cleared and ready for building.
No, we only clear as much as we need to.
Well, we're going to hold you to that and we're going to make writing.
People are going to want laws. We understand that, right? So you're going to clear the lot out for the house and lawns and maybe get the trees away from the house, but there, there is some buffering and stuff that, that is required, even though you're leaving the whole back half of that property all full of trees and that offsets a lot, but you still need some buffer between the houses.
And we have a piece of conservation land we like too, where we want someone to go in there, you know.
Yep.
Does it have to be pinned out? That's, that's.
Yep.
So I think, uh, good. For now, I think we can accept the, I move that we accept the waiver.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn to grant the waiver.
Of seven point two point D point one one, which is for the trees?
Yes. Um, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Onto the next one.
On this one, I, I know it's going to be a, a minimal amount of, of trips per day. Um, however, it is the, the whole neighborhood is one, one road in, one road out, and at what point does it become a problem? So I, I don't know if the burden should be placed on this development, but if, if not, you, then, then who? So.
So Tom's looking down this way, so, so um, the, the a traffic study or trip generation um, is, is something that is done twofold. Um, first off, um, if you're, if the um, how do I say it? If the um, streets connect with streets that have high traffic volume and you're adding more trips to that, you want to see what the level of service is to determine whether or not um, a traffic light is required or stop signs are required or anything meets warrants that the state would tell us something needs to happen there. The other reason for the traffic study would simply be that if they don't meet warrants of any kind, to look at how many, how many vehicle trips are actually being created by this development. Um, it's one thing, it is a minor street under our design requirements because of uh, the number of homes and, and I think it's uh, the number of trips that would be created. But keep in mind that, um, and this is, this is the, the number that they use throughout the entire country. So situations are different in different parts of the country. But they look at nine, it's like nine point five trips per household per day. Um, you know, mom goes to work, dad goes to work, mom comes home, dad comes home. Maybe there's a child that are old enough to drive a car that's comes, goes to school and comes home, then goes to baseball practice or what have you. So they come up with um, nine and a half, it's like nine and a half trips per um, household per day. And so that factor would then look at how many, how many vehicle trips based on um, what, eleven, eleven homes out there?
Thirteen.
Thirteen homes, excuse me. And then um, we would look at peak hours. So we would look at probably like a, the peak hour is probably seven to eight in the morning and four to five at night. And how many trips are actually being generated during that time period to determine if there is an impact out there? So, you know, there is some validity in requesting that information. Um, my gut tells me that it certainly is not enough to meet warrants for traffic signals out at Proctor Road and Route One. Um, or um, even additional signage of any kind, except for I do have a signage issue that I will get to at the um, when we talk about conditions. Um, so I mean, I think certainly having valid information is good, but it may not require tripping, no pun intended, tripping any kind of um, standards for them to install signage or lighting or any of that sort of thing.
So, and that would be uh, you're referring to this particular project?
Yes.
But if, if we look at the entire neighborhood.
If you're, if you're asking for something more than just the trip generation numbers from this development, like a traffic impact study, they do include what they call background. Um, and that background information, and they're going to take into consideration all of the homes um, that are already on that road and um, get a vehicle count of how many cars during peak hour in the morning and peak hour in the evening are going up and down that street.
And remember, it is a dead end.
Technically.
Technically, well.
Technically.
I think it's because of that end, why I'm asking this question of if, if we like for the Avondale uh, prodigies.
Yep.
Um, we require them to put in a, a back road just for, for emergency access. Uh, that, that's much larger scale than this is.
Right.
Well, I'm talking to that end, this comes off.
Well, this.
Yeah.
It, it, it ends all one way out.
One house up.
Overall, so um, for, I don't know, like what the fire chief, uh, what his, his thoughts are on.
I think there was um.
There was an email from the fire chief and he was, he was satisfied with it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. That's probably the more important thing is the fire chief. But, but I, I don't know if, if uh, traffic is an issue coming up that road as is. I'll leave it there.
But I'm just thinking with, by adding in thirteen houses, that's pretty much going to double the traffic going out onto Route One.
Uh, I, I don't know if it will double the traffic because there's quite a few houses.
Yeah.
From, from his road all the way to Route One.
I doubt it.
There's a lot more than thirteen.
I'm not, I'm not sure that there are.
Well, but in addition, I do know that there's also a, a business back in there too, that likely generates some trips. I have no idea how many per day. But um,
And then this again is in the mobile home overlay, so more could be generated if you went that route, but we decided that this was best use of the project.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Honestly, I, I don't have a problem with it. If the road, if the road can handle it, I don't have a problem. Honestly, I, I don't have a problem with it if the road, if the road can handle it, I don't have a problem.
And to that, to that um, matter, um, the Public Works Director. Did not, I don't believe, consider um, Proctor Road as part of his review. Because his comments indicated that this time that he didn't have enough information on the development. Um, designed road. Um, to make any comments, although I will say, although we need a, a better um. Detail on that, um, based on the information I've seen, which is in your packet. It does meet the standard for a minor road. Um. Out there, but the Public Works Director did not make any comments regarding Proctor Road or. What kind of shape Proctor Road may be in, or whether that needs to be addressed at all.
Right, yeah, you said there wasn't enough information for him to make a decision.
Correct.
But that doesn't really impact the trip generation assessment.
The.
No.
Right, so those are two separate.
Yes.
Issues, okay.
I'm a little confused, is the trip generation just the new homes in the. In this subdivision that's gonna lead out into the existing road, or is it of the whole road that leads into the subdivision?
It's of the whole road, isn't it, Lee J?
Yeah, I mean, again, um. Hold on, I just wanna.
If you read this, I don't get it.
So, what the waiver is requesting for is providing the trip generation rates. Um, the trip generation rates are gonna be based on just the, this development, what's being proposed. If there's something more you want, you'd request, you, I, you would not grant the waiver. And you would ask for a full traffic impact study to be done.
Okay.
By doing a full traffic impact study, that provides all of the background data regarding all of the existing homes. On Proctor Road or all the existing properties on Proctor Road. And what the impact may or may not be um, out at the intersection with Route One.
Just counting thirty-five houses.
Still really thirty-five out there.
Thirty-five plus two beds.
Okay. I know the one right next to the railroad tracks is a four family.
On Proctor Road.
On Proctor Road.
But the trip generation would be just the new addition.
Yes.
Correct, so the thirteen houses.
Unless you requested a full, a full traffic impact study.
Yeah, I'm talking about what this calls for.
Yes.
Right, let's.
What does that? What's in the writing?
So, I mean.
But if, if we, if we grant the waiver. Then they don't have to do it, but if we don't, if we say no, we want the trip generation, they're gonna end up doing the entire.
Right.
Not necessarily. No, you can do a trip generation of the. Of just the proposed subdivision.
We, we could.
It's gonna be very consistent with what Lee J just verbally told you.
Yeah.
Right.
The rule of thumb is roughly ten eight or ten trips per single family.
Right, so a hundred and twenty-four or a hundred and twenty-three point five trips per day.
Right, but my point would be that if, if we're going to, if we're not going to grant the waiver. And we're going to have the trip study done, I think we should have the trip study done on the entire road to find out what the real impact is going to be. Because we, we're gonna dump a hundred and twenty odd cars on the Proctor Road, and they're gonna, because it's coming in right at the end. And they're gonna be fighting with all of the other people to get off, so I think if we're going to do a study, we need to have the whole thing studied. Not just the, the one section with the subdivision.
So um, to the chair, they're not all hundred and twenty-three point five trips are not all gonna happen at once.
Correct, that's over a twenty-four hour period.
Per day.
Yes.
It's gonna happen, you know, incrementally, but. So if we grant this waiver, Lee J, I hate to put you on the hot spot again. But if we grant this waiver, is it written in stone then uh, not to be reconsidered at a later date? So, or is there something in this application later when we come to give them a final approval? That we can reconsider based on new information, new circumstances and whatever.
Great question.
Okay.
Great question, so the answer is that if um, if you're feeling like you need that. Analysis done, you should request it now. The reason I say that is because using the language you just used, which would probably be appropriate. Um, reconsidering any of that, a reconsidering action or motion. Can only happen at the very next public meeting by the board in which. This action was taken, so if you waive it now, the only time you could reconsider it is at the next meeting. And he may not be ready for the next meeting, but if you're feeling like you're gonna make a motion to reconsider. Um, to bring that issue back up, then we would need to know ahead of time so that we can notify the applicant to be here. Um, and um, be available to hear your motion and hear your request. So um, it's either um, request that now or waive it and you've waived it.
Okay, good answer, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Yeah, Marty.
Now, as we know, Proctor Road. Could. Join Bedford, but at the present time, it's uh, shut off. If, at any condition along the way, which has been shut off for many years. If that ever opened, that would generate humongous amount of more traffic. Because you would have Bedford coming through as a shortcut. So how do we rule on that one?
We, we can't rule on hypothetical.
I mean, I realize that's first of all, but I mean.
It, it's, it's a good question, Marty, and it's something that.
That would only be a policy decision that the select board would make, and they would have to do that in conjunction with the. Bedford City Council.
Yeah, I mean, because that would be affecting. Two towns.
Correct.
And that wouldn't be necessary to planning board decision, because you, that is. Going on to connecting. Paritaries between two towns.
All right, we, we really uh, can only judge on what's, what's okay.
I know, I know the area down there, Tom.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying it.
Downriver could be an issue, but.
But I mean, but also too, you also got a lot of four-wheelers that go playing or ATVs that play down through there.
Yeah.
I mean, but that's not a traffic study. ATVs.
Uh, one question, I, I don't know the answer, where is it a shortcut to, is it shorter to go that way than take Route One?
It goes out near the airport.
Which airport?
The benefit airport. If it is, if you go all the way down where that road uh, comes out, it doesn't come all the way down onto, is it granite street extension?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
That'd be an expensive road to spend.
Okay, well. Be, before, before we do. Before we, we cease the discussion on this issue, because we haven't had a motion on it yet. I'm a little concerned because we're adding in almost thirty-five percent more traffic onto Proctor Road. But by allowing the subdivision, I think at, at that level, we should have a traffic study done to let us know what the impact is going to look like.
Well, do you confine it to a engineer letter with trips and stuff? I'm, I'm just thinking when you say a traffic study, we're talking full blown. I mean, an engineer is gonna look at this, do some quick counts and say it's negligible, because that's kinda what it is, and that's why I asked for the waiver, I just thought it was. A little bit of overkill, but whatever you guys want, take care of it.
Well, it, so, let me, can I bring up?
Yes, absolutely.
In the ordinance, in the preliminary plan. For major subdivision, seven point two point D point twenty-seven. Notes that projects projected to generate more than four hundred vehicle trips per day. We would require a traffic impact analysis.
Okay.
That's right, now to the ordinance.
And that's what I think I, I put minor road in, that's probably what I was thinking. After, and I remember looking at that, but.
So, I mean, if can I, uh, just, are you done? I didn't mean to cut you off.
I, I'm, I'm never done.
Well, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll done you. Uh, um, so my, I guess my, my concern is at what point does it become an issue? Like, that's what traffic studies are for, is, is enough extra traffic that becomes an issue on the. The street. But it, so I'm, I'm wondering if the four hundred vehicles, I guess, I was wondering what, at what point is it is when it's four hundred?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't focus on four hundred, I realize it's in the ordinance, um, in a checklist like that. Um, but if the board feels compelled that you need that information to make a decision on something lesser than four hundred trips a day. You can request that.
Well, may, maybe I'll make a motion then, and, and before I do, I think maybe all it has to be is just. A s, a report, a, a statement by a traffic engineer, a rep, you don't have to have. To have someone counting actual. Trips, um, just so that we, we have an idea if we're at that, that tipping point. Um, so I will make the motion that we deny the re, record, the request.
Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion fails.
Okay.
Um, Lee J, I have another question.
Sure.
Uh, is there a way to modify the request for the waiver? Is it just either a completely blanket waiver, or is, can it be some permutation of a waiver? Uh.
Uh, well, I, I.
It's gray instead of black and white.
I'm usually the person that's in the gray area, but I think it's pretty black and white, the way it's written. Um, as part of the checklist, and I think you either waive it or you don't waive it.
Okay, um, I think it's a, a burden. For a this small of a community to have to do a full-blown traffic study, that would be. That's a completely, you know, uh, just an emotional response to thirteen homes being. Uh, built on a road that doesn't seem to get that much traffic back and forth. Proctor Road seems to, it almost seems to be a dead end at one end. So it's not a through street or anything else like that, so. I would be inclined to grant the waiver, because I think it's burdensome. For them and for a community this size to have to have a traffic study.
Then make a motion.
I move that we grant the waiver.
Speak into the mic.
I move that we grant uh, the waiver uh, for uh. I grant that we, I.
Motion has been made.
I've moved that we um, not require a traffic study.
Right, motion has been made to grant the waiver on the trip, the trip generation assessment.
Yes, that's it.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Jamie Lowery to grant the waiver, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's three and three, motion fails.
So we're at a deadlock.
We're at a deadlock.
To approve or deny it.
That's, that's it, it's either approve it or deny it, and if we don't approve it, we automatically deny it.
Okay.
Again, the wording on this is assessment, wasn't really safe.
Right, this is a trip generation assessment.
Right. So I'd say.
It's not really a full traffic study.
No, no, no.
I have some problem providing an, an assessment like.
Well, then I move that we. Go ahead.
Already got his direction, the ne, the next item is. Uh, areas within or adjacent to the project identified as higher moderate value wildlife habit, habitat by the IFNW. He wants, he wants the way of having to get a letter from IFNW that says it is or is not.
Right.
High impact wildlife.
Oh, is that all you're looking for is a letter from uh?
We can, it's maps that are published by.
Yeah, pretty much.
And, and that's what I was gonna ask.
Does, does IFNW say that this is a high-impact neighborhood?
Yeah, I, I withdraw the waiver request.
Okay.
Bill, are you thinking of the beginning with habitat?
Yeah, we would contact them and get them to do a site-specific search, um, you know, to the best of their public record.
I know they're, I, I, I know they're really busy these days with that, I've seen a couple of other developments south of here that. Have been requesting IFNW information, it takes a long time.
Somebody at the state just put out a new mapping tool that is fairly current.
It's the beginning with habitat, they're, they're revamping their whole mapping system, so. Um, that's pretty accurate information, you know, all you need to do is get the map of that area from beginning with habitat.
Will do.
As quickly as.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, if, and if it requires more than that, we'll just get on it, you know, ASAP.
So we don't need a motion on that, cuz you, you.
Right.
And then I, I move that we approve the waiver for seven point two point D twenty-six. Second that. Stone Water in Brimstone.
Second that.
Okay, motion by Jamie Lowery, seconded by Tom McGinn for the phosphorus control plan. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. So you have those, now, let's ask the public what they have to say about anything. If you, if you wanna, if you wanna address the board, please come up and use the mic. Make sure that the green light is on the microphone, just tap right there where it says table, uh, and state your name.
Come on up.
All right, this feels like The Price is Right, come on down.
I don't win it either.
You never know.
Where you get to be on.
Depending which door you select.
Cindy Novakowski, I do live on Jasper Lane, I am the.
Speak into the mic, please.
Is, is the light on?
Lights on, okay. Okay, okay. Usually everybody says I'm too loud, but um, I do have a few concerns. And um, I don't know if this makes any difference, on the last thing that we just talked about, living on Proctor Road for the last twenty-something years. Off Proctor Road, um, the biggest thing that Proctor Road is getting onto Route One.
Mm-hmm.
That's, you know, I don't think it's a matter of how much traffic, yeah, there's gonna be more traffic, it's gonna be harder to get on U S one. It's not about the number of cars, it's already been a problem for many years for people to get onto US one either way. There's a lot of traffic coming from Kennybug and from Bedford, so it's like, you can sit there quite a while, but. And there's, there's a few other things that I, I brought up to Mr. Feldman and. Um, a few things that are not on any of the paperwork that's there that I questioned about, first of all. We have, I have my septic system in the front of my yard and. I just wanted to make sure that when this road is put in, because the deed has changed since I first built there. So it's actually, the road is closer to my front yard now than right of way. And I just want to make sure that it doesn't encroach on my septic system in my front yard at all. Because of the, because it's much closer.
Which house is yours?
I am the first house on Jasper Lane.
First house on the right, you'll notice how the right-of-way jogs.
Yep.
Yep, they're all on the right.
The jog is right where her septic system is located, and I think it's a matter of confirming that that right-of-way is not going to encroach. On her septic system.
Cause the right-of-way was moved and it's closer to that septic system now.
It's a very reasonable request. How do we ensure that?
Only require the, the applicant to provide the survey that goes down through that portion of the right-of-way. And to locate the septic system bed on the property as part of that survey. Well, sure, as part of the, as part of the survey, yeah, um, that's up to the client to. Well, sure, as part of the as part of the survey, yeah, um, that's up to the client to do that.
And another, uh, small item was I also, we had also installed a light. Out by the road, which is a it's a rather large light that we had installed out there. Because it's the only light on the street, and I I think that's also gonna be might might be also in the right of way. Um, too close again. I don't know if you saw that. We have a big street. It's a wooden street light.
When we spoke the other day, I didn't ask, but is that like a a central main power pole with a.
No.
Street light on it or?
No, it's it's, um, it's a homemade pole, but it's it's, you know, wired underground and everything.
Right.
To get up to there, because we we.
And once they survey that area.
Okay.
That will tell us.
And the other thing that, um, I brought up was the fact that, um. We have now a. Uh, another whole community on our road or right of way or whatever you wanna call it, our private road. And they have, you have this new company has putting in all these houses. They have an HOA. They have all this set up to take care of that property. The people that live there, and and my question was, okay, what happens to the three houses, which there won't be anymore on that side of the road, on that road? Um, our our road maintenance, what happens with that? Who takes care of? All these cars coming in our road now every day, every night, nine and a half times a day? Are we gonna be responsible for that area? Of road that now has all this new traffic coming up?
So she did have that discussion with me the other day as well. And, um, it would be my intent as a recommendation to the board. That part of the conditions of the final approval would be that the HOA or the declarant. Um, be responsible for maintaining the entire length of that road until until if and until it becomes a public right of way.
Okay.
Actually, we the deed states that. Uh, there's already agreement and it extends to the. The whole road units extended up. We did submit that.
The, yes, it does say that it extends out, so that would, the way I understand that, maybe I'm wrong, because I'm, you know, new at this, but it then that would mean that. The road maintenance would add all those houses to that road maintenance, but it's not. It's not done that way. They have their own HOA. They have their own road maintenance. It's not done the way that that is written up.
And from from my understanding of what Lee J just said. You will not have a road maintenance agreement on your house. It will be part of the HOA.
Right, and what they're saying is it a little differently, because I have a road maintenance agreement, but that maintenance agreement says that. When more houses are built on that right of way, which. Those thirteen houses are still on that same road.
Yeah.
It wasn't brought. It was not put in there that way. They have their separate. Road maintenance agreement is because at HOA, it might as well be a road maintenance agreement, because they are taking care of their own properties.
But where but what I'm suggesting is that.
Right.
Through the condition of approval is that the applicant, the declarant or the HOA will be responsible.
Right.
For that maintenance.
Until it becomes a town road, if it becomes.
If it becomes a town road.
Yes, well, that.
And I don't.
That's a civil matter. I'm not getting into that.
I was just about to. Or to put a condition out that goes against. Which you agreed to, and I'm not saying I won't agree to something like that. But you really can't bypass something that those people agreed to.
Uh, but my point is they bypassed it by making their own rules at the other end.
If you read that, that's very clear, but I don't wanna get into that. If something. Will get an opinion on. The people, but I have planned. I'll take the care of it.
Well, you know, I just came because I have. I had no information from anyone on the things that I just addressed. I had no information on it, and I was just concerned on these few things to make sure, you know, that. You know, these were addressed at, you know, at a meeting.
Well, I I it's good you brought it up now, uh, but, um, and we we'll wait until next time we meet to see what what. What type of agreements.
Yes.
Couldn't be made and you know, just wait till then.
Yes.
And we will certainly probably run this issue by our, um, legal counsel as well.
And I would think that you may wanna. Sit down and negotiate. With the folks and on the other side that are that are going to be putting all of that in.
Sorry, um, but there is no negotiation.
Okay.
And and as far as I see from my point of view, there is no negotiation with the landlord.
Okay.
So this is why another reason that I wanted to bring this up.
Look, thank you then.
Okay.
Let's see now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any?
So I I did.
Oh, hey, can I ask a quick question while we're on that topic?
Absolutely.
What was the what was the impetus of the? The jog, so to speak, in the right of way? Can you explain that?
I can't. I don't. I don't know. What that's.
Okay.
Or why.
That's that's related.
Yeah, what was the what was the? Sort of the circumstances around the how the right of way was moved in front of your property?
I need to rest. It's done. I just asked, signed a paper. And I asked you to leave that you not want this done. It was done, so the frontage should be for property on the other side. So the president sold the property to the property, but have another frontage that they're on the right part. I did not wanna do it, but I had my family. And I need the rest. I signed it with my gift, and I know what we do.
So the follow up question on that is on the plan, there was there's reference to reconstructing that section of road. Is it proposed to be widened? Or simply resurfaced?
It was gonna be wide. The road was gonna be twenty.
From roughly what is it now here? I couldn't tell from multiple people talking. So it's gonna be twenty feet wide from. But right now, is it is it twelve feet wide? Is it is it sixteen feet wide? Is it nineteen and a halfs?
It varies. It's just very.
It'll be a uniform twenty.
I just.
Yeah.
Um, right now, because of the change in the. The deed.
Could could you come up? We 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 just gotta have it on the mic, so.
Because of the change of the deed, the road that now exists there, it it's a it's a like, you know, it's dirt road. That road is not. In the right of way. All the time, like, so when they first go in, they they're gonna have to do the road differently there, and the right of way now goes out to a point and back in, and. Ah, the road that's there now is pretty well straight. But it's gonna encroach on, you know, differently on my property and differently on one of the neighbor's properties.
So roughly in front of your property, how wide did you estimate that road?
Um.
The wide set of, uh, the road then, it's not twenty feet, I don't think, no.
I have a question. So is your septic and your light pole on your property?
Um, I think the light pole is now in the new right of way, but the septic. Um, where the. Uh, because it comes, I'm sorry, it comes from an angle from Proctor Road. And it used to go straight in, and where it comes up to that angle, my septic is closer to that angle. And the same thing when the angle goes back in again, my septic is closer to there.
Okay, but is your septic on your property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I see where. Okay, but you're not sure about the light pole?
Yeah, the light pole is is it was a trivial thing as far as it'll probably have to be moved, but the septic. With I didn't. There's no setbacks. I asked about that. I just didn't know how much room that you could have. From, you know, a road. Your setback. To your septic.
Yeah, I don't. I don't know about that, but I was thinking that when you sign the change for your deed. Your septic might have ended up.
That, uh, like I said, I would that I was leaving that day, didn't wanna do this, and it was for my family, for two family members. And. And now, and I'm not the type of person to not do something for my family, even though I did not wanna sign this, I did. And I regret it, yes. But now with a wider road going in, I just wanna make sure that, you know, it doesn't encroach on my septic.
But the road that you're gonna widen is your property. Is that correct?
That's true.
So. Well, yes, but what I'm saying is if you complete the purchase. The road that you plan on widening will be your property. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so you can widen it or do, if you buy the property and become the owner, you can do that within the confines. Of your property.
I mean, every development.
Right.
Issue, um, well, together, not gonna, there's not gonna be a subdivision, there's a way as. Probably. Then, so that's how we should remain.
Yeah.
That's what we're stretching on. That's something I have no power to do, and I don't think this. Something you should get into.
Uh, I agree. Um, and I think it's unfortunate. Hopefully you guys can come to some kind of agreement.
You know, I didn't know, and I just found out recently that this was actually sold, so, you know, I.
Well, and I think it's wise that you asked, so now you know.
Right.
And hopefully the two of you can come to some consensus.
I I would be glad to sit down with them. I don't. And I, you know, to discuss it. I mean, I just have this concerns and I, you know. Just wanna know what's gonna happen.
Well, yeah, hopefully something good.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Do you have a copy of any of that paperwork?
Yes. Done with me, but I.
No, 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 I mean, what I'm just saying is.
I have it all, yes.
Okay, well, I'm just saying in case. To get pinpoints or information. That's why I'm asking is so that.
Yes, I have. I have all that paperwork.
Okay, I mean, I'm just.
Work, and I have my my need, my I have.
Yeah, but I'm just saying so that. Communication can be helpful that way. That's all I'm trying to go at.
Yes, I have it all over the whole.
There.
Like I said, I'm not an expert on any.
No, 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 I understand that, but I'm just saying. Uh, with people looking at. Pinpoints is that. You know, get the angle by the dangle to make sure everything comes across. We have reference points instead of guessing.
Yes.
That's what I'm going at.
Yes, and I don't know what.
No, I know.
I I.
Let's put it this way, a lot of people don't.
Right.
I mean, it's just not you. I mean, uh. It's there because it's there, I mean, but. People that don't know where their pin marks are, some people you can ask them that, and they won't even know what you're talking about.
Oh, yeah, I have all my.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
The right of way is fifty feet wide, thirty twenty, fifteen, you know, inside of pavement. I don't see it as a issue.
I I I'm hoping there is, and I don't know.
I do, and we'll solve it.
Yeah. Okay.
See if, uh. See if we can learn things out.
That's right.
It made me aware.
Yeah. I will be there in a moment.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Now for the folks at the table.
Jennifer Richardson. Erica Spencer, her daughter.
No, can you say your name again?
Oh, sorry. Jennifer Richardson.
Okay, better.
Um, I just had a quick question about the Proctor Road. Was that ever engineered?
Looking at me, I don't know. That was.
They had engineers.
I remember. No, I remember when it was liquid tar and there were holes all through it. There's a speed on a speed bump, um. In this, in the wintertime, the frost heaves, so I don't know how much has been done for this much traffic.
The curiosity, does it town plow that?
Yes.
Okay. Then the only one I can ever suggest to ask anybody who might know something would be the old. Town. Road Commissioner.
Roger.
Yeah.
He might.
But I mean. But the fact is. It's been back so long. The at one time or another, the Proctor Road was like a roller coaster. I mean, uh.
I remember as a kid.
And it had a lot of soft spots. Along the way, I know they. Repaved it many different times and kinda tried to stiffen it up, but I mean, uh, to answer your question. And Bud Merrill isn't around anymore to tell you anything. Because he's gone.
So it's a bug in your ear. You might wanna research.
Yeah, it's.
And so for a development, they can have less than the fifty foot. Road that everybody else is required for a subdivision?
It'll be required to to meet the current standards, which fifty foot right of way, the twenty feet of pavement and and certain amount of of of, uh. Underlayment and asphalt.
Jasper Lane.
No, I'm on Swampgrass Lane.
I'm sorry?
I'm on Swampgrass Lane, which is the abutting property. Where all the houses are gonna be, right next door. Um, and somebody had a question if it was still wet. Yeah, it's wet. It's standing water. I don't know where they're getting their field soil test unless they're up on the hill.
Yeah.
I can't. I couldn't tell. On that one where it falls, you know, the map that goes like this and shows the. Yep.
Your property is likely over here. This is a large.
No, or that, or the one in front of our gates. In front of the hundred year, a hundred acre homestead. We're in front of that. Okay.
Mister Javon, right? So your property is likely out here somewhere. Got over here.
Going right there.
Here.
Wet area. Yep, we're on a hill.
So your question is what?
It just seems too wet.
What seems too wet?
The land.
Entirely. This crosshatch here is wet, and what is not crosshatches up.
So where are you going to put the septics?
Here in the boxes.
Right there.
They will.
Okay.
This type of soil requires twenty four inches of separation. You see some high ground water table to me. Where we can put the bottom of the management. So likely as well begin two or three inches out of it.
Yeah. I was gonna say, I have had most recent hours, and we had, we were gonna have to build it out like nine.
Shouldn't be that much, but, um, you know, the this this is. Of the fifty something acres, we, uh, were confirmed about thirty three was up. So there are somewhat areas out there, but they're mostly bigger wells. There were, um, weapons that, uh, are connected to a larger level extending to the bottom.
Back that way, right?
In order to reconsider weapon data, sweep three parameters, not, uh, what the vegetation and what the hydraulics, which is kind of your wet super test. But it also has to have seasonal high ground water table within seven inches of the mineral soil surface. That's really where we as soil scientists can make our bones, because that is is sort of a standard to parse out for most people. And that's why we do, I really intend to do.
That's why it's all grouped right there on that hill. Called the sap on the hill, is that?
Yes, it says on the ice floor.
Oh, okay, yeah, and then Erica's question. She called the sheriff. Someone instructed her to do that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
My daughter called the sheriff. And they said there's nothing they can do.
About what?
Speeding and the traffic.
Well, it certainly can't do anything about the traffic, because. Traffic is going there to for whatever purpose. Um, if there are speeders, um, they could certainly. Um, they're, you know, they can certainly address that issue, because they are contracted with the town of Arundel as our police force.
Well, so he would have to be sitting there all day, and when I spoke to him about this, he said that's not, he has Oliver Rundle and Oliver Rundle has speeding issues. So my my problem is. I was hoping that if this does go through, um, because it is a dead end, there's many children that play down there. They ride their bikes. We've been trying. We've been talking to, I forget who the. Yeah, or somebody, if they can put in like speed bumps or anything to slow the people down, because something bad's gonna happen. To one of these kids. And we want that to not happen before it does. You know what I mean? It's a dead end. They they should be able to ride their bikes. They shouldn't have to worry about that stuff.
Where would that be? On that map, can you?
On Proctor Road?
I live right by Cindy. Right before her.
Okay.
On Proctor Road, yes.
Or is that Jasper Lane? That's just before the parent?
Yes, I live right past Billy Tracy.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm, you know, I'm more than welcome to.
No, no, I'm I'm just trying to.
Picture where it is, yeah.
I thi- I think getting, getting speed bumps or or anything along those lines would be an issue of going to. To talk to the people at, at DPW and Public Works and asking them about it. But you're gonna, it's gonna take some time, it's gonna have to go through the selectmen because they're gonna have to approve it.
Yeah, okay.
But that's, that's the best advice I could think of.
Have them come to the selectmen.
Well, yeah, they they would have to go to the selectmen and to and to Department of Public Works to get that done, it's not anything that we can do here. Because we have no control over Proctor Road, we only have control over this section, this Jasper Lane section that's being improved.
Okay. Do they get the tiny little lot sizes because it's a development that they're approaching you with, is that why they get allowed the small lots? Just curious.
It's a cluster development, yeah.
Setting aside a lot of open land towards the back, the whole left side, most half is.
There's a, there's a fairly big lot at the very front that is on into open space as well. So there's, there's a fair amount of land that's going to be undeveloped.
Undeveloped forever.
Property, he wanted access to our property so he could develop. Okay, are there any other questions from the public? I wanna thank you for showing up and asking questions, it's a rare event. Okay, uh. Lady and gentleman, she should be here so I could, she could give me kudos for having said that.
Right.
At this point, I think we still need a couple of more items to determine that this is a complete application.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, you, he, the applicant, um. Get my notes here, so the applicant, um. Um, withdrew the request for the waiver on seven point two point D point twenty five. Which was the wildlife habitat information, so we will need that and also the trip generation information.
Correct.
Um, so, um, at this point, you could not find the application complete until that information's been submitted as part of the application. Um, and then we would put them back on the agenda at that time to finish this part of the process.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Yep.
Close but no cigar.
Well, if you can get that wildlife letter or is, and just the traffic assessment. You know, we'll get you right back on the agenda.
Unless they. Well, the problem, the problem is, is you're at preliminary and, um, unless you either submit that information or get the waiver. The application can't be found complete, so the information needs to be submitted prior to the board making that determination of.
It would only be conditional on the, on the, the end at the final review. And if we had, if we hold a public hearing and then we sit with you and there are a couple of items. We could very well say, well, you, you know, you need, you need something from DEP, you've submitted to DEP. So we'll make it conditional upon your getting the permit to allow you to do that, but in terms of a preliminary, no. I've, I've dealt for too long with wives that know how to write their husband's signature on a tax return, no, you can't. Okay. Thank you for your time.
But we can continue towards the five.
Oh, yeah. In in one, once it is, once we determine the application to be complete, the next step is the final. Where you submit all of the plans and we have a public hearing and we're all good to go. No, we meet in, uh, every two weeks, well, we meet on the first and third Tuesday of every month. So whatever that first Tuesday in October is.
But we can't get that information the day before the meeting and expect you to be on that agenda.
Right.
We, we need to have it.
We have a, yeah, we have a fourteen day lead time to get on the agenda.
This is a very simple job and, uh, assessment.
Yep, once you get it back in, then, and we'll get you back on the, um, next, next agenda that we can. Well, they can move you to the final.
Right, right.
I don't, I don't raise my hand and vote, I just give them guidance.
Yeah, so.
Right, but the public hearing.
We'd have to deem the application complete, have a public hearing, also then vote on the preliminary.
You, you can.
Move them to fail.
You can, in during subdivision process, which is a little different than your site plan conditionally, you. You can determine that you're gonna hold a public hearing at preliminary.
Yep.
Or you can hold a public hearing at final.
Okay.
It's the board's determination.
We've been holding them recently, we've held them at final, so that we can just process everything out.
Right.
I think we have a direction.
Okay, excellent.
There, there are, there are also a number of, um, issues we may wanna discuss offline, um, regarding. Um, plan set and laid out, how it needs to be laid out and that sort of thing, but we can do that offline at some point. Very good.
Future.
Yeah, Marty.
Also, we said we were gonna possibly have a lawyer review the.
Yeah, when, when, when we get to that point, absolutely.
Just saying.
Yep.
Public hearing and.
Yep.
Okay, on to others, fun stuff, proposed amendments to the land use ordinance, you should all have your books.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. It worked.
Sue Bill, take care.
You guys are gonna leave for the fun part. Oh, dry stuff.
I, I, I would sell you a dollar.
Okey dokey.
Okay. We should just start with the very first one.
Yeah.
Net development density.
Yes, so you want me to go through these?
Yes.
Of course, certainly, um, so, uh, one of the things, you know, as, as we look to go through all of this information. Um, in the zoning ordinance, Jim and I, um, have, have looked at this several times because of. Various projects and, and, and issues, and it was kind of quiz, it kind of. Curious to us as to why we have a definition of net development density. And a definition of net residential acreage, but they both really say the same thing. And so I thought it would make sense to get rid of one of them, um. The one that, um, I suggested we get rid of was actually the one that was adopted in two thousand fifteen. And the previous one was around since two thousand and amended in two thousand seven. They effectively say the same thing, so I'm not sure there's a difference in, in what they're called. Net development density and then net development acreage, but I don't think we need. Two side by side in the ordinance.
Okay, that makes sense.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
That's between two different or possibly three different planners back that part.
Yeah, but the, but both of these are in the ordinance.
Yes, but somebody was trying to. Score by making something.
Two thousand fifteen.
Right.
Was the one that we're eliminating.
That's the one, that's the one Lee J is recommending, the one in red that has been stricken out.
I'm trying to score points, Marty, by getting rid of some of the stuff.
I.
But I'm just saying.
So, I, I agree with him because I, I think that the net residential acreage more adequately describes. What is or is not part of that calculation, when it starts talking about, uh, hydro soils, ponds, any portion of the site which is cut off. From the main portion of the site by an existing road, these are all things that say, well, you can't count that stuff over there.
Right.
And, and to me, that's, it's an easier read.
The issue that I am seeing right off the bat with eliminating net development density is it's referenced all over. Zoning ordinance and the standards within the land use, section six. Yeah. The land use district.
Yes, and, and there was an adjustment on that, I think later on, isn't there, Lee J?
No, but I can make that, and once you, as you can see by my notice, it says which one to keep and what one to get rid of. So, I, that's why it's up for discussion, but once we decide that, then I can either make or not have to make changes to.
So, so I guess my follow up to that, hold on, hold on, would be. It would be very confusing if the net development density is applied to a non-residential. Application.
Right.
And we change the definition to be net residential acreage. I could see some, somebody, myself included, as I'm going through the ordinance, thinking I've got a site plan, I don't have any residence. I don't need to look at this definition.
So I've got an easy way to solve that.
Okay.
Let's change the title of net residential acreage to net development density, because they both again, they both say the same thing.
Want to, I don't wanna eliminate a definition.
Right.
And then have a.
So we'll just change the name so that it, it parrots the rest of the ordinance.
Issue anywhere, maybe based on.
Dig that deep, I don't know, I mean, I had like, I had like thirty seconds here.
Flip through quickly.
Plus, I don't have the subdivision ordinance like you do in some of you.
Whose fault is that?
So. And now, now children. Don't, don't forget.
Is why couldn't you put both of them in the title? Net development density slash net residential acreage and then have that in there. And then you covered it both places, right?
Yeah, that's what you'd like, I can do that very easily.
Sounds like a word soup to me.
Yeah, that, that is pretty wordy, so.
Where's John DeKindred when you need him? Oh, boy.
Then if you're looking up. If you're looking up the definition, which, which term do you look for?
No, I mean, right now with the two there.
Go with one or the other, I, I think it's cleaner.
There's a number of ways, see, you know, see also.
Yeah.
Or any, any number of different things, uh, my point, I'd really have very little preference of which one we go with.
Yeah.
I just didn't want to omit, omit a term from definitions. That would come back and.
And, and, yeah, I think you quite a good one.
Yeah.
Not everything's residential.
Okay, we can do that.
I, I do have one other comment on that, and so I, I, I like what we've come up with so far, but. There's the, the part that says any portion of the site which is cut off from the main portion of the site by existing road, water body, similar physical condition. I recall, Marty, you probably remember, uh, the, or his song development on Old Post Road. There's all this small, uh, one bedroom, little, little houses, almost like the original tiny houses. Um, they own probably forty acres on the other side of the.
Of the railroad tracks.
Not only the railroad tracks, but the river as well, they just had no access to it, never would, they'd have to put a highway over that. If they didn't have, if they couldn't ha- count that acreage. They would have only had, what, three, four acres left that to build on, losing forty acres, they was all one parcel originally, but. It got bi- bisected.
So in, in a case like that, I mean, that's existing already, that's not con, that would become non-conforming, um, use or non-conforming. Density required densities, um. But this is gonna really address going forward and how to look at that issue.
That property already was one property.
Right.
On both sides of the river and tracks, yeah, and.
Well, you gotta be careful of that, I hear what you're saying, Tom, um, but if you look at, um, the state law in the definition of a subdivision. Um, if you look at DEP, if the project was large enough to go to site law for that, if it's on the, on the other side of a road. Um, it's, it, it is considered the same development for the purposes of reviewing and permitting. But it is also on the other side of a road.
Uh, just for clarification, on this particular piece of land, it went, had to go through major. Uh. Bridge drainage and everything else because it entailed the Gulf Brook. Uh, and they had to put a super culvert's head because of flooding and everything else.
Right, they were able to cross the brook, but not the tracks.
Right.
But this is al, but this is also saying, um, which is unsuitable for development. Um, and then cut off from the main portion, so if someone is able to bridge it or is going to bridge it as an example. To access it, then it's no longer cut off.
But, so I, I'm wondering though, how, how many, you know, in, in every case, I can think of someone bought a parcel. And looked, and then looked into developing, that parcel they, they bought could be. Split by some natural feature or some, or, or road, if, i- if it's a road, I have no problem with saying that, that's. That's someplace else, but similar physical condition like Goff Mills Brook or a railroad.
Sure.
And we have that issue, um, I think it's only fair for them since they, it already is one parcel now. To allow that and, and, and they're not gonna be buying half the parcel, cause who, what good is the other side of, of the tracks?
So, I, I mean, my question is, again, I'm not committed to either one. It, do you feel more comfortable using the definition of net development density? And then just carrying the net residential acreage up there as one title?
Um.
And just using net, the, the definition is defined in net development density, because that does not discuss cutting off.
I, it's just the part that's cut off, and I don't know how, how anybody else feels, um. I've already got out for it once tonight, I'm all right, losing, striking out twice, as long as I'm gonna strike out three times. Yeah, um, so it, it, I just think it, it really could be a hardship for someone to. Not ever be able to use that, that the rest of their property is part of the density.
Well, it could mean, um, if there's agreement amongst the board, it could just be. Um, after ponds, striking any portion of the site which is cut off from the main portion of the site by an existing road, water body or some.
That would work for me, I don't.
Just delete that section of that statement.
I like that. What's everybody else feel?
I'm fine with that.
Also, do you want, do you want anything in there because, uh, conservation? Cut off by conservation.
But I think.
I mean, I just say it, you know how we have some properties.
Well, well, the conservation is still allowed for density purposes.
Okay, I mean, I'm just.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, I mean, that.
Yeah.
Another loophole, because the other thing is, once we've changed, we've gone through changing some of this before. Somebody has to let Rich in. Okay.
Do we have to, Marty?
All right, but the fact is.
Yeah.
We've had changes done and then it never got. Per page, per section, that was always left out somewhere. And I don't know if you call it like spell check or whatever else, but, but it never caught up and we were always finding it. Not deleted somewhere else.
Yep.
I don't know if there's anything new in the magic program to catch everything.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we can.
Cause we played that.
A search.
We played that with Ted.
Lee J, I, I like that, that you, uh, striking that, I think that would work for me.
Okay.
Okay, what are we striking?
Well, so we're striking the part that you like, um, which is any portion of the site which is cut off. From the main portion of the site by an existing road, water body or similar physical condition which interrupts the continuity of the site. And keeping and slopes of twenty five percent or more.
That just guts everything that's in there. You now, you now have no, no way to say what's excluded if you do that.
Well, the other option.
Side hydric soils, ponds.
Basically, it it would read the same as, but laid out differently as net development density, which is all wetlands and hydro soils, all watercourses, and slopes in excess of twenty-five percent.
So I I feel it's, it's almost a taking of the property. It's good buildable land, but no one can get to it. So it's on the other side of something. Um. And and why not allow someone to come to to build a house with the the other side?
Yeah, but it's still density. It's still part of the property.
Right, I think it should be included as part of the density.
Even though it's not accessible.
I'll give you a case in point. The law that I own. I got Doc Brooke running through it. Okay.
Both sides.
Both sides.
Yeah.
I that's still counted. The other side of that, I'll never be able to build there, or you know, it's wetland and but but it still counts as part of the density of my lot. For my ten acres, and I'm still paying taxes on it all, too. So I I I I kind of get what you're going at with water and stuff. Now, if you've got a clear road right down through the middle, yeah, I think you got two different lots.
Right, maybe, maybe, maybe a road is is different.
So.
But but a railroad is for or a C M E easement that can't cost you.
Just table.
Or.
The pipeline.
Yeah.
So I think it's still a lot of counters part of the density, but you're right, you know, it's gonna go on it, you know, C M E would probably get ugly and put a hose under their wire, you know. I was on a pipeline.
Yeah.
I'm sure it'll cut the void be there anyway.
No.
All right, L J, I think your task was artfully weaving all of these things in without being too vague or too specific.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, I hear you.
Okay, on to the next one.
Moving on to the next one.
Hold on.
So what's going on?
I'm gonna re rewrite it.
L J's gonna propose help for it.
I'm gonna rewrite it in a way that will allow those areas that may be cut off to be used for density purposes. Anyway, I'll I'll wordsmith it. Okay, the next one. So currently, um, under the Board of Appeals section of the ordinance, it says that a disability variance may be granted by the Board of Appeals. And I had this discussion actually with the fire chief um, a while back, um, and with Jim um Nagel before I proposed anything on this. So there's been in in I won't use, there is a particular situation in town, but it's been ongoing for a while where someone needs a handicap ramp. Um, and it's pretty um difficult financially hardship right from the get-go for them to to get all the information prepared and go to the zoning board of appeals and show a hardship. But the way the state law is written, it basically suggests you gotta grant the board of the the appeal. So rather than um making someone go for a month or two that may need a handicap ramp to get out of their house or to get in their house and um and a financial burden on them to get all the information prepared, was proposing to change the language that would basically put the um um per per permitting capability into the code officer's hands to issue it under cer- under those circumstances. But also indicate that when the use of that ramp is done, whether the person moves away, um, passes away, um, whatever the case may be, no longer needs the ramp, that the ramp would need to be taken out.
I'm all for that.
Yeah.
Cause it simplifies the process.
Yeah. Right.
Right. I think that's
That seems.
A great change.
Okay.
Like that.
And I don't think there's any wordsmithing needed on that, the way it's.
Looks good, so.
That's good.
Well, apply it anyway, will you?
Huh?
Apply your wordsmith skills anyway.
All right. Um. Estate lots. So Jim and I ran into a.
Never gonna finish with these. I've been on the board for fifteen years, and for fifteen years, we've been discussing estate lots.
Sorry, my turn now, my my turn now. Um, so I mean, I'm not changing the name of them or anything, but I really see estate lots, um, the way this ordinance was supposed to be set up as what I would call a flag lot. Um, you got a right of way, and then the lot usually is out back behind the other parcel. Anyway, regardless of what it's called, um, we ran into a situation that in the end, um, I feel that, you know, Jim and I talked a lot about it before um we allowed it. But now that I see it, I feel really uncomfortable with it, except that it met the intent of the way this ordinance was drafted. In the sense that there is a a lot that um someone had, and they wanted to have an estate lot. But the way the house got built, it doesn't look like it's an estate lot. It doesn't set back off the road anywhere. It doesn't have a right of way down there um, per se. And so the more I thought about it, I thought that we ought to establish an access strip length. And um what I'm proposing is that the length of the access strip for the proposed estate lot shall be equal to or greater than the required frontage in the zone in which the parcel is located.
So in other words, if the if the frontage is two hundred feet.
Yeah, gotta go two hundred feet back.
Or four hundred, it has to be.
Whatever the required frontage is. Yeah, I mean, if you're in a, if you're in a lot, in like.
So it has to be at least two hundred feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, it just this particular one, I won't go into details, but it just, once it was, once the house was built and everything, it really didn't set right with me. But the paperwork and everything that we looked at, it met the way the ordinance was written. But I'd really like to see this become a true flag lot. Um.
How close was it?
Huh?
Curiosity. How close was it?
Close, Marty. I won't go into details.
No, 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 I'm just saying.
Yeah, close.
Why I was asking that? Because beforehand, you had a minimum house had to be set back a minimum of fifty feet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Fifty feet's not much.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying it, but but then we came across, somebody else wanted to put a front porch on. And and the house is built and then the front porch. That's why I'm asking that.
Now it's forty feet.
So so what I'm hearing out of you, L J, is you don't want this provision to be used to replace a a minimum lot frontage standard that can't do that.
Yeah, I think that's a perfect way to describe a change.
You know.
Yeah, by having, by having a fifty foot
Right.
Strip.
That's ten feet deep.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Opens up to.
Exactly. It needs to really
Right.
Needs to really pass a straight face test. Um, rather than having a fifty foot strip, fifty feet deep and saying, there's my access for my estate lot. Um, let's make it truly a a backlot, a flag lot, or an estate lot should be. That's just my thoughts. Um, if you folks feel differently or have other ideas.
Yes, there is. I have no objection to that.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Great.
I think two hundred feet's a little much.
That may only be in the R four.
I don't know.
Right?
No, you didn't say that.
No, 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 but two, two hundred feet was just an example.
No, um. Oh, right. It's whatever the the lot frontage is required for that, so.
If the R one is on hundred feet, you'd have to go back on.
Hundred feet.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, all right, here's the fun one. Off-street parking and loading, which, Tom, you tasked me with trying to figure something out, and here's kind of what I came up with. So, excuse me, parking lot driveway surface, all parking areas, driveways, and other areas serving fifteen or more vehicles shall be paved with two inches of bituminous concrete or an equivalent surface over a gravel base of at least twelve inches in thickness. Or what I'm proposing to add is, or two inches of bituminous concrete surface may be substituted with a minimum of two inch crushed gravel reclaimed bituminous pavement or similar stable surface material. If a case can be made that the bituminous concrete is not warranted. And then appropriate bumpers or wheel guards shall be placed where needed, because we don't say that right now.
So you're doing away with the twelve inch gravel base.
I I think, I like this.
No, there's still the 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 base of twelve inches thick.
Right, but it's, it says vehicle, vehicle shall be paved with a two, two inches of bituminous concrete or an equivalent surfacing over a gravel base of at least twelve inches in thickness or, which implies another option.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
You eliminate everything before the or. So now you have a two inch bituminous concrete surface uh may be substituted with a minimum of two inches of crushed gravel.
So what I can add in there is provided um provided the gravel, provided the applicant has a base gravel of twelve inches in thickness. I can.
L J, what I would do.
Yeah.
Is is after the word thickness, for a period.
Um.
Say two inches of the tunus concrete surface. Or two inches, you know, may be substituted with.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
The other.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, I think that's.
Sure.
More.
Sure. Just get rid of the or and after. Yep.
Good.
Jamie gets the wordsmith hat.
Thank you. Yeah.
Well, and if, if I may, at at the end of that paragraph, appropriate bumper or wheel guards, that would that be a separate sentence with capital A?
Sure, um. Yes, after warranted is a period, so that should become a capital A. Perfect. Thank you.
Good, I I I like this. I've been looking for this to years.
It just, it it gives us a straight face test. They gotta provide us some reason why they wanna do something other than pavement.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good.
Okay, great. Wow, this is easy. Now the fun one.
Yeah.
Now the fun one, um. So what I'm trying to do here, um, is yes, there's a lot of red, but a lot of it is redundancy and just trying to um, make it s- make it spelled out. But what what I'm proposing is um to consolidate, I guess would be the easiest way to put it, consolidate the conditional use process and the site plan review process into one process. So understand conditional uses are uses that are allowed provided they have certain performance standards and things with them. And what I'm trying to do is just say those uses shall obtain a site plan review approval. Because we had a process for conditional uses, and we had a process for site plan review. And there were two different processes, which makes it confusing. And well, what are we doing? Is this a conditional use? Yes, it is. Well, then they gotta follow this. Well, if they're doing just a site plan review, and they meet these performance standards, then they gotta do this. So what I'm trying to do is eliminate the this in conditional uses and just say all conditional uses shall obtain a site plan review permit. And then there's one process, whether the use is a conditional use or the use is something that meets the site plan review standards. And it sounds complicated, but I'm trying to uncomplicate the process by eliminating one process and still making sure that they go through a review in front of you folks.
Yeah, it looks like a whole page already. You get rid of.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, I mean, I'm just, the red.
Yeah.
You send the the book out by a page.
Yeah.
Well, you know, there were so many redundancies uh in the ordinances, and there was a period of time when I first joined the board that they were the planner at the time was trying to get rid of them or consolidated them, but I think sometimes he added to them. Uh, maybe unwittingly.
It happens.
But he did, so.
It's not his fault. He worked for the Department of Redundancy Department.
That's true. The circumlocution office, I think that's from Dickens, if I remember.
Um, the only other thing that I really wanna note, because it is somewhat of a change in in here is that, um, where is it? Help me out, Rich, you found it.
It is on uh ten point two.
Ten point two point one jurisdictional activities. The number one, the first one says the one-time construction or expansion of any non-residential structure or building in excess of a total floor area of currently, it says a thousand square feet. Thousand square feet's not a lot. That's pretty minimal, actually. So I was proposing to make it twenty-five hundred and one square feet, so that if someone wanted to do a twenty-five hundred square foot expansion, they could still do that without coming to the planning board. Um, but anything over twenty-five oh one kicks it in to coming before the board.
And under that would stay within like site plan review?
No, within stat. Yes, yes.
And but what about the tiny houses of the because those are only eight hundred.
Those don't come before you folks anyway.
This is all just for.
Okay, I mean, uh.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, I mean.
And then the rest of it is merely making sure that it says site plan slash conditional use everywhere, so that there's absolutely no question as to both of those meeting whatever the other standards are that we have throughout that section.
Can I ask a question? Uh, uh, why twenty-five oh one? Why not twenty-five hundred?
Well, I've run into that before, um, years ago. If you say twenty-five hundred, which is.
Fifty by fifty.
Well, which is the right number to use, if you will. Then it's, okay, does that mean if it's twenty-five hundred, it needs to go to the board? Or if it's twenty-five hundred?
This does say in excess of a total.
Yeah, and that's why I say twenty-five oh one, just to be clear.
Just to make it clear.
Okay.
But I would, I think to Tom, I would say if it was twenty-five oh one, I would argue that it is not in excess of twenty-five oh one, and I wouldn't have to go in front of the board.
Well, that's because you're an engineer that stays up all night.
Get the s- the same issue, like, well, is it twenty-five oh one or twenty-five oh two now?
I just.
So you wanna keep it twenty-five hundred?
I think it, it's.
In excess of twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, it, since it does say in excess, then.
No, you see, I I.
And that one square foot, if they wanna play with it, give it to them. Who cares?
I'd rather leave it at a thousand. It eliminates the question of whether or not they have to come in front of us. If it, or or get it reviewed. It's a thousand square feet. You gotta get it reviewed.
But this is non-residential, uh, I think.
But it's not.
But it says non-residential.
The one-time construction of resident of or expansion of any non-residential structure or building in in excess of a total square footage, where's the part that I saw that said residential?
You blocked it out.
Oh, it's in the, it's the, it's in the one down below. I'm sorry, it's in part number two. The conversion of a thousand square feet that was crossed out. So you're gonna take something from residential and convert it to non-residential.
No, no, it's not crossed out.
Yeah, number two, it's in red.
No, it's not. It's in blue.
I got news for you, boss, it's in red.
I got news for you, boss. Mine's in blue, and it's not crossed out. It's merely changing the, changing the number.
Which one you're looking at?
He's talking about the text.
Oh, you're, you're talking about the conversion. Okay, yeah, so we're eliminating that.
Which would lead me to ask why we're eliminating it. We're talking about moving something from a residential to a non-residential use.
All right, so you wanna keep that, but I would suggest moving it to twenty-five hundred, so it's consistent.
I would agree. A thousand square feet is not very big, Rich.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, okay, I think you're just being contrary here.
I'm I'm actually looking at it. I'm actually looking at it from the point of view that it's a, a thousand square feet can be considered a de minimis change. More than a thousand is not. It's a substantial change, and you you should go before a review authority to be able to make that change.
So then we're gonna add a section that talks about de min- de minimis reviews?
And Rich, I would, I would agree if we did not have a. Separate, uh, staff level review. But where, you know, twenty-five hundred, it's a. Twenty-five by forty. Addition, right, am I doing my math right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is, so a commercial building is not huge. You know, and, and I think. That certainly within the, the purview of a, of. Staff or fifty by fifty or twenty-five hundred, I guess would be the, the example.
Right.
Um.
About the right size of a bar.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I don't know if we need to. Get involved with that.
It's for an existing business that already had gone through the.
Right.
I agree.
Right, for, for one, for an existing business, what about, what about the point below where it's a, a residential converting to. To a non-residential.
I agree with you on that, Rich, um. Cause that, that's now a new business.
And presumably a residential area.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you wanna keep that one at a thousand? Yep.
Thousand and one.
That's right.
In excess of nine hundred ninety-nine.
Okay, um, I, 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 not a problem. Not a problem. I think that's like the only standard. There's no standard changes beyond that, the rest of it is just the. Site plan slash conditional use.
Good.
wording.
Yep.
Ah, um, there is just a, another thing which I thought was curious, ten point six point four criteria, criteria for approval.
Oh, yeah.
There was nothing in there that required that the, under the criteria that it meet, uh, that it be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So I added that statement in there.
That's good to add.
Ten point six point two?
Ten point six point four.
Four, okay.
Number ten.
DJ. Yep.
Right, the ones that we have to take the votes on all the time.
Yes.
I like that.
And, and that's it for now, um, so I can make those changes easy enough for you. Um.
Do we have a vote on the first important section of the slide?
Well, wait till I make the changes, so you're all happy with the exact.
We've gotta, we've gotta have a public hearing and we have to vote on.
Oh, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yes.
Um, so the only other change in, in. Um. Rich sat in on a meeting, um, with me the other day is that. One of the things that dawned on me was last year, we modified the subdivision regulations to. Eliminate cisterns and fire ponds and just require sprinklers for residential developments. And, um, the zoning ordinance has a. Three pages worth of fire performance standards. Um, and half of them are for residential developments and still suggest. Cisterns and fire ponds, so I've got to modify that and eliminate the residential piece of that.
That wasn't oversight.
So, and, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would, I would caution to not eliminate it. If we are going to still want to require them of residential. Developments that don't go through the subdivision.
What residential developments would not go through subdivision?
You guys wanna elaborate on? Ted's former vein of his around the whole existence. Right, subdivision, uh. Subdivisions.
Yeah.
Under free lots or, you know, each meal stuff.
You have to find it.
I think part of that discussion. Gets to a bigger policy issue. Um, bigger than this board as it relates to. Do we want all new residential homes? To have sprinkler systems and that is a debate I do not want to get involved in again.
So.
But that's a debate that would involve. Uh, the adoption of NFPA as a standard through the town.
Correct.
Because they require.
Correct. Yes.
And I, I do believe the selectmen have. Already done that. They've talked about it, if they haven't actually voted on it.
Uh, yeah, I don't know, I haven't been, um, privy to that.
But the current, uh, temporary or interim. Fire chief doesn't feel that sprinklers. Are. The. Gold standard necessarily. And that they have to be installed in all residential developments. Isn't that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. So maybe we should wait for the dust to settle before we, uh. Make any changes in a rundle and see what the state does.
Well, it's just that currently. The zoning ordinance would be in contradiction to the subdivision ordinance.
Right, so. Maybe we should.
And, and I, I think for that reason, that in and of itself is a good enough reason to take it out, because we have no control over single-family. Residences.
Right.
So we can't tell them to sprinkle, so I, I think it should come out of the zoning ordinance itself and stay in the subdivision. It, it does clean it up a little bit.
I, I don't personally see the selectmen mandating sprinklers in single-family homes.
Probably not, yeah, no, I would agree, probably not.
So. I think we need to stay to make that change.
Well, we, we're gonna have to bring it to town meeting anyway, we're gonna take this section out. Take it to town meeting and if, if town meeting decides, no, we think that should stay, then it stays.
Yeah, and we're taking it out simply so that there's consistency between the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations. Because then it'll be confusing as to, are we requiring for the zoning ordinance, are we still requiring cisterns and fire ponds? Or like the subdivision regulations, we've done away with that and said. All new homes in, in a development. Would be required to be sprinkled. So.
Okay. And I think we've got a lot accomplished, actually.
Yeah. Yeah.
Not a fancy wordsmithing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll clean that up, not a problem.
Yeah, no, I think you've. Been super.
Done good.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Maybe we can get it all done by the next time we decide to have a public hearing. Uh, I don't know when that's gonna be. It, it's not gonna be at the next meeting.
We've got, we've got a while though, don't we?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we've got plenty of time, I'm just thinking, you know, if we're, if we're gonna have a public hearing, we could just. Piggyback this on top of it.
Do you wanna have this ready for election day?
Good grief, no, I don't, it, it, no, it's for next year, it's for the June, yeah.
We've got plenty of time.
Yeah, we do, I just. Do we wanna sit around and just hold on to stuff or we get it done, we can pass it on. And pass it on to, to somebody else.
So what I would recommend is that we. You know, we're starting to see some sporadicness. In the applications like. Tonight. If you have a scheduled public hearing, you've got one item. You know, strategically plan some public hearings on nights when we don't have a heavy attendance.
I agree.
Yeah.
And be able to get these back up.
Yeah, I mean, I just need a little bit of time to clean that up.
Well, but once they're, once they're cleaned up.
Yeah.
You know, we, once we sort of nod off on them, they're ready for you.
Right. Yep.